Good evening. I'd like to bring to order the June, what's the latest date?
Six.
Six. Special deliberative meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. This is a meeting that is technically open to the public, but is a deliberative meeting, which means we deliberate amongst the Select Board and our advisor. And although members of the public may be here, and we do have some here, and some may come later, they are observers, and they do not speak, nor if we ask them any questions, they're just not part of the process. I'd like to call this meeting to order again, and I'd like to check in with a roll call. I'm Jack Creighton, I'm the Chair.
Jane Hethel here.
Paul Grady here.
Brian Kennedy here.
Diane Kennedy here.
And the other people in the room will please, who are officially here, please identify yourselves.
Michelle Leary. I'm Kim Roy, I can raise sources.
Tricia Van Kessie.
And we have Public Relations, Justice, I always miss my name.
Schreier.
Schreier. Purpose of this meeting is for us to review what the previous Select Board had identified as town-wide goals and things for the Select Board to move forward on. But probably what we really want to do is we want to throw together our thoughts about what are the pressing issues for Cohasset and what we think as a Select Board that we can do to advance those issues. So as we're discussing this, please keep in mind to focus on planning for the coming year and focus on things that are actually achievable by the Select Board and ways in which we might do that. We have our facilitator. You want to facilitate?
Thank you. It's good to be back here to see some familiar faces and also some new staff faces and welcome to Paul as a new member of the Board. So, most of us are pretty familiar with the goal-setting process. We are changing it a little up this year in speaking with Jack. It's pretty much what he just said. We really want to focus and spend the bulk of our time this evening on what we hope we can really achieve as a Select Board in the next 12 months. We sent out a reflective survey to sort of gain your insights and thoughts about what some of those goals might be, some of the items and issues facing the community. But we're really looking for the next couple of hours to have informal, free-fall discussion of what you, as a member of a five-person Select Board, see so that as a group together, the Board can come together and hopefully find some stuff to work on in the past year. I have about a 10-minute deck to go through with you. Some of it will be familiar. Just to sort of set the table for what we're going to be doing the next few hours. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. It's not rocket science. I'm sure in your place of employment or in the course of your career, you've done goal-setting, so I don't pretend to be here to teach you anything you don't already know. So, but it's always helpful to review because it's been 11 months since we sat in this room and did it before. So, just to briefly go over the agenda and for the folks watching at home, I'm going to quickly do an overview of the workshop and goal-setting, who does what. I think it's really important as we go through a goal-setting process or any kind of strategic planning, one of the first fundamental steps is to understand respective roles and responsibilities. What is the Select Board's role? What is the staff's role? What is the town manager's role? What, if anything, does the Charter say relative to that? Before we can go forward, we have to look back, but we're just going to briefly look at what our FY22 goals were that the Select Board determined last year. But again, we really want to focus on the next 12 months. And then we'll have discussion, as I said, where are we, where do we want to go? We'll review. I've compiled all the responses from the surveys that I received and what we're going to work on the current year. And then we'll talk about how we get at a consensus after we talk about these items and ideas and issues that you've identified or bubble up through our discussion in the next 60 to 9 minutes and what's really achievable. And speaking with Jack, we don't want to lose track of things that are longer-term issues, but we also want to see what might really be achievable in the near term, the short term. Because we've been dealing with some big issues the last two years and some things that we've been working on and had good momentum slowed down and/or even came to a standstill or didn't pan out the way that we thought once we started down that trap. So, it's really important for the Chair to have us be top of mind as far as what we might be able to do this year. And also, we always consider what are the carryovers for FY22, if there are any? Because we always can accomplish anything in a given year. But again, not to look, part of strategic planning is to always know that not only we're looking at the short term, we're looking at the long term. So, and then of course, once we determine what those goals are for FY23, what are the action steps? What are the follow-ups? Who's responsible for what? And then hopefully we'll have you all out of here by 8:00. So, I've passed out everything that's on this deck so that you can, if it gets too small or you can't see it far away, and some of the font does get a little smaller when we get into the responses of the survey. But one of the things that I really like to do when I meet with folks is really, it's important that this be a benefit to you, that I could sit here and talk for two hours and tell you how to do this and that, but really it's only meaningful as you, as a Board member, feel like it's a benefit to you to have this discussion with your colleagues as you build a team to go forward the next year. So, I'd briefly like to ask you to think a moment about what your expectations are for the next couple of hours, knowing that we're at a goal-setting workshop, and what you at least hope to achieve by the end of our time together. So, if you just feel free. Whatever you want, Mr. Chair.
Diane.
Sure. I want to, I guess one of the questions I had, which is, because we use our annual goals to then basically set Chris's goals. So, Chris's goals are kind of the action steps that get us to the policy goals that we arrive at here. So, you know, I look back at last year's goals and, you know, that's what we've been working on. And at the time, last year, we thought that they were all achievable. For example, the comprehensive zoning revision. So, I, what I hope is, I hope that we have great conversation about, you know, about where we're going, but I don't see how this is so different than what we've been doing in the past. You know, are we looking to actually get specific projects, kind of a consensus on the Board for that? Or are we, again, going after these, you know, initiate public facilities capital planning, say for example, for last year? That to me would have been what we've always done, what we could do again this year, develop a comprehensive communication structure. So, I just want to understand if we're looking to drill down a little bit further on those kinds of policy goals.
I could address that. Both. We want to get an overall thing of what we want to do, but I think it's important that we identify some very specific, very granular things that we could say that we could do, because it's very easy to get lost in theoretical. But I think underlying all of this, we want to keep our eyes on things that we can actually get done. But there's no, one is not at the expense of the other. Good point, Diane.
And just, you know, on that, I mean, I, in filling out my questionnaire for this, you know, there's so many achievable projects that have been teed up for a year, for two years, for three years, that I want to make sure we don't lose track of. Harbor infrastructure, Elm Street corridor, zoning bylaw, you know, maybe it's we only bring back the one that failed at special town meetings. So, those are the kinds of things that I'm really interested in trying to walk away from tonight with some kind of a, yes, we're going to make sure we push this over the finish line, Town Hall, that kind of thing. We want granular.
Corey.
I think, you know, largely what Diane said, I'll support. One thing that's been on my mind is that I always thought that we should really kind of bifurcate our goals here, in that a lot of the goals we've talked about have been ones, and it's in the packet, where we have to rely on town staff and Chris Senior and we all put together. Those are really important. However, I think we can also identify goals that the Board can do itself, that we don't rely, are there policy goals? Are there ways that we deal with subcommittees? We don't need town staff for that, right? We can just do that here. So, when I think about these goals, I think we should have our eye on two different things. One, what we want to work with town staff with, but the other thing is, what are the things we can do ourselves that's going to make an immediate impact? And those are things that we can do, we can do really quick. So, I hope we can, out of this, we can have, I don't want to say parallel tracks, but maybe two tracks of what we want to get done.
That's why we broke it into two. So, we have some granular things, but we also have what do we as a Board want to do that only we as a Select Board? Good point, Corey. Paul?
I think it's more important to me personally, what do we as a town want to do? Not that what do we as a Board want to do, not what the town manager wants to do for following his goals. And forgive me if I'm not paraphrasing, but I think it's what, I like this communication. That's one of the most important things to me personally, is getting town input, getting consensus. What do they find important? Do we find Elm Street important? Do we find the harbor important? They all are. But what about the quote-unquote unattainables, you know, what about every other street and town? Where's the priorities? That's what I'm about is. And that's for the communication. I think that goes through you, doesn't it?
Am I able to address the Board?
On this, limited, but.
Okay. Yes.
But good.
Sorry. There's one more.
Thank you. And it's getting that outreach out, you know, explaining each and every item on the agenda clearly, succinctly, getting opinions, getting in, collating it, and coming up with that consensus. That's what I'd be for, each and every one of the Town Hall, Elm Streets, and all the other ones are important, schools, roads, and what does the town see? That's really what I'm kind of keyed up for.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Jane?
I think I'm a combination of all of everyone's inputs in terms of, I completely agree that there's a lot the Select Board should be doing at our level, and a part of that is communication. I think it also falls on our town staff to do that as well. And I think that we can have a whole variety of different goals under our bigger goals. So, the way I thought about it and filled out the questionnaire was, you know, looking at our three existing goals. There's still a lot of work to be done under all of those existing goals. So, what are the different specific goals that we can move forward towards, whether it's the Select Board, the town, or getting communication and input from our citizens to advance the ball, for example, on a capital plan or on zoning? Or on figuring out which projects to put on the ballot for August for a debt exclusion vote? Like, we have some really big decisions coming up, and I think we have to move with precision and specificity, but also, you know, receiving input from the town and, you know, all working together on a combination of everything in order to make it happen. And to me, that's where the specificity is important, because without it, we are losing time and we're not getting things done. And that was sort of a bit of my frustration last year in terms of, we didn't have a specific enough plan, and so we weren't able to advance, I think, some key things that we wanted to, and we all agreed on. We just didn't have the pathway to get it done, whether it was a zoning bylaw or some other project.
Thank you, Jane. What I'm hearing from everybody really is that it's a lot of agreement. I think, and that probably speaks to that what we need to do is pretty clear to all of us. And there are specific things that we don't want to lose track of, things that we've worked on, specific projects. We don't want to lose that in all of this. But I'm very impressed by everybody coming back to the broad themes and then everybody also coming down to the very specifics. So, I think that's good. And by the way, I'm going to more facilitate what your opinions are than speak to what my opinions are. Hopefully we'll move this board forward, because all of the people on the Board have waged battles. You've gone out and met the public, you've listened to people, you hear for the great $1,100 in your salary amongst other things. So, your opinions are valid and your opinions come directly from the people. So, I think we're doing very well.
Thank you. So, just so you have it for reference as our discussion goes on, these are your FY22 goals that we came to consensus, and you know the status of them. You know how they did or didn't play out in the past year in terms of the comprehensive communication structure, and that incorporates communication inbound and outbound. You have a major step in having Justin here, of course, that's a new addition. The zoning bylaw group, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and some of the challenges with that and the RRP. And then the Public Facilities Capital Planning, including identifying funding options, which if we need 10 years from now or if we need 10 years ago, would probably still be here, because it's just one of the inherent challenges of working in a municipality and trying to get it all done. So, quickly, I just want to review sort of the landscape here in terms of why we do goals. Just because it helps to provide a methodology that we're trying to provide and measure outcomes for what you're doing. And it's also a performance management system, as Diane mentioned. Often what happens here is what the Select Board adopts as goals also becomes Chris's goals, and they trickle down and becomes the staff goals. So, it lets the town and the citizenry and residents know that they really have, the elected leaders actually have a plan. They sort of know what's out there and about, what's on their plate, and at least have some methodology for trying to address the myriad of issues that are out there. And again, it's not online item activities. We hope, I hope we all know that a goal is not a goal if it involves a monetary appropriation. An objective might be an appropriation, but the goal in and of itself can't be, I want to improve, you know, the personnel system so we will hire four people. If it's dependent on appropriation, it really isn't a goal, because that's dependent on so many other things like funding availability, town meeting, public will, whatever. So, we try to create a process for getting you to goals, because your five of you are here. You all have ideas, needs, wants, as the Chair noted. You've all been out talking to the public. You know what they have. So, we're trying to take this huge kitchen sink, if you will, and sort of drill it all down to some areas of community of interest for the five of you to distill over the course of this discussion and say, this is what we believe is important for the next two months or 12 months. So, again, your priorities, when we talk about all these dozens of items, is what is the priority? What's the top priority, the major items you need to address? High try is other items you want to address and try to fit in after you've prioritized the other ones. And then, of course, if is time or appropriations or funds, like additional state aid, ARPA money is a good example, a grant that you didn't think you were going to get. Those are if types of things. So, in terms of the discussion and the goals in general, your job as the administrative body, you know, the policy body making of the community, is to set policy. Your job, one of the best jobs you are, most important jobs, I think, you're set with doing is the strategic planning of the community, to set goals, to prioritize those goals for the community based on your feedback and knowledge and what you believe Cohasset should be working toward. And after you prioritize and establish those goals, set the objectives and the strategies for them. The town manager's role, along with his staff, is to implement those and to come up with the timeframes and the key result areas on how those policies and objectives that you set are achieved and report back to you and progress on the reports. Take your direction if they need to pivot at some point or you encounter an unintended stumbling block or consequence and go there. So, one is your big picture, and the staff is how you get there. So, just a few things to ponder as we continue along with our discussion. And hopefully, if you did the survey, this also had you sort of beginning to think in this vein, is what's not happening that you wish was happening? What's happening that you wish would stop? What changes do you foresee in order to achieve the Select Board goals and increase credibility in the community? Our credibility as elected leaders leads to trust in the community, and without trust of our citizenry, we really can't do a lot, because it's an uphill battle. So, that's another reason why it's important to set goals. What are the consequences of not taking action? One of my favorite sayings is sometimes if you have a choice to make and don't make it, that in itself is a choice. So, if you have undesirable results, if you do not take a certain action, what can you potentially mitigate potential negative impacts of? How will the changes take place? Who should manage it? What is the timetable? That's traditionally a staff responsibility, and what will the Select Board role be? So, I have compiled the responses to the questionnaire that went out last Friday. But also, again, it's important to the Chair, as we talked last week, that even though we're talking within this snapshot of time, the next 12 months, what do we need to make sure we don't lose track of? What can't go into that black hole? What can't fall through the clarex? I'm not going to go through these. I'll just briefly read the questions. And while we're having our discussion, you can read the responses that are received. It was just, I believe, seven questions reflecting over the past two years and Cohasset's response to the pandemic, budget challenges and unexpected demands. What surprised you most in terms of the town's ability to pivot and address everything? What do you believe is the most pressing issue facing the town right now? Issue or issues, plural. Please list the top five to seven items or issues you believe important for the Select Board to address in FY23. What services or programs do you think the town excels at? If there are, is there an area or areas or an issue you think the town has not addressed or is lagging in a bit? If so, what is it and why? What is your laundry list of longer-term items the Select Board must keep in mind so they don't fall through the cracks? If you had to choose two areas for the Board to increase, expand, or create services in the next 12 months, what would they be? And if you had to choose two for the Board to reduce, cut, or eliminate in the next 12 months, what would they be? And again, this is in the context of the goals you've been working on for the last four or five years and the goals that you'll identify to work on in the next 12 to 24 months. Finally, the last question is, do you believe in general that the current level of town services fulfills the expectations of residents? I've quickly summarized where there were points of connectivity in the responses that I received. And as you can see, as Jack mentioned too, we didn't hear a lot of disagreement when we went around the room when our expectations for the meeting were articulated. Zoning reform, infrastructure, communications, particularly to residents and engagement of our citizenry, capital projects, sidewalks in particular, and parking issues. So, again, that's not to say this, we're immediately going to zoom in and focus on these. But I think it's always helpful to sort of do a reflective environmental scan, because you do goals because you can't do it all. So, this has to be some mechanism by which we can sort of try and find a way to drill down and work on some things that we know we can achieve. So, that's a good segue into our open-ended discussion, Mr. Chair, and I'll hand it over to you.
Let's do like a lightning wrap round. Take a second, think of the one issue that you want to, just one, and just throw it out there to, you know, bang, 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 just to see what happens.
I'm going to go a little sideways on the question, because as we've been talking and just to bring up something both Paul and Jane said, that kind of a light bulb went off in my head. So, last year when we were having this discussion, we spent a lot of time talking about zoning and zoning. And at that point, when we left here and then teed up some subsequent meetings with the different committees, we did have a plan. We did have a plan, and we had these, we cast these working groups with going forward and working with the community and soliciting input on the various working group initiatives. And all of those projects, we spent a lot of time working on individually, because each of us had some assignment to one of the working groups. And I include any of the Master Plan groups, I include Harbor in this, because the Harbor and Master Plan were the two bigger studies we did. And I think there's a plan, but what, there wasn't a closing plan. There wasn't, how do we bring this project to closure? We can, you know, so each of these working groups spent a lot of time, you know, having, I know with Elm Street, we had probably seven public meetings with over 15 people there, at all of them. And then somebody raises, oh, well, what about this? Or what about that? And then it just kind of takes on a life of its own, because we haven't, we weren't, I guess, I think the problem is maybe we weren't able to communicate effectively, properly, efficiently, whatever it was to actually make the case. The zoning bylaw working group, I mean, we had the A-team on the zoning bylaw working group talking about what is a priority, what is a deliverable. We went to town meetings, had a town meeting. It was something, and I wrote it in my discussion, that I hear about every day of the week. I hear about development. And we didn't make it work, because people arrived at town meeting with a.
So, you're analyzing that, but for now, just to get a sense of the Board, is there one issue and only one?
Issue, project, or?
Just anything.
Communication.
Communicate. Corey?
Communication, but part two. We talked last year about, and this is to your point, Paul, about, there's two parts of communication, right? Inbound and outbound, right? So, Justin, I'm glad you're here, and this is, we're making some progress, and hopefully we're excited to see what you get done, website, all this stuff. It's all outbound. But I think the big issue is, how do we get inbound? How do we get feedback from residents? How do, where do they go? How do we catalog it? How does it go to certain places? How do you even track resident issues? I mean, I mentioned in my comments that people get, people who are frustrated is because they can't get the answers they want. And that's not because we don't have tons of people in Town Hall trying. It's just sometimes you get routed the wrong path. I think step two for communication, so for me, communication is still up there for, but now it's on the inbound. How do we respond?
Trying to figure out bang, bang, bang.
Yep.
Sort of, Paul?
Well, I'm going to stick with these guys, communication, but also follow with deadlines. And this young fellow gets his job done, and then we'll get communication to the public. We'll have to work out ways to do that, get surveys or anything like that, but deadlines. I think we have to start with communications and, you know, it's like the blind leading the blind. Someone's going to fall on board, more will fall on board. They start stepping up to the plate, hey, wait a minute, we're being heard. But there is a deadline to that. We come up with our priorities, get it out, be it a survey, be it anything along those lines, and we have to have this in by, say hypothetically, June 6th. And, you know, we require and we need your input. You live here, you pay taxes here, it's your town, and we're just your voice. And that's all we are, really. We're elected to be the town's voice. So, communication to me and deadlines is set, set a parameter and stick to it.
Thanks, Paul. Jane?
Yeah, I agree on the communications. I agree with Corey too about the intake. That inbound is really important. And I think not just waiting for people to come to us too. I think on all of these projects, whether it's zoning or infrastructure or capital projects, we all have various people telling us their opinions, and they may all be from one group or another group. I think what I feel like I'm always missing is a more overarching view of how all of the different groups feel and how that pans out in terms of, you know, if questions were to go to the ballot, what's the, where's the town at? Is it heavily divided? Is there great consensus on these issues? And so, I think trying to proactively invite that discussion, hear the concerns and address them is how you're going to, I think, be able to tackle some of this. So, for example, zoning reform, you know, having a more, you know, proactive way to take in.
take in concerns about potential zoning bylaws elicit, you know, the, I don't want to say the defenses, but you know, the concerns so you can address them when you're at town meeting or right before, when people are saying, well, what about this? It's like, well, we thought about this and this is actually how it works. I think we're sort of missing some of that, that input channel, including to proactively reach out to people without overwhelming them, but to get more meaningful input and in order to also communicate effectively what is going on or isn't.
So we have a consensus of communication and also in and out. There are ways in which communication happens in and out. Are there some thoughts, again, of ways, of methods? You know, we have some things that Justin, you know, does, but, you know, Justin, we're, we're talking, but that's one example, open meetings, I mean, meetings, website. So what, if you were to say two things that you think are important for in and two things that you're important for out, Diane?
Hold on, I'll go first, I want to think about this.
I can go first.
Okay, yeah, we should, we should change it up. And next time Cory goes first.
So I actually put this in the communications bucket and then that may not be the right place for it, but the remote voting, that's a huge participation issue, but it's also something that we need to really move forward and continue moving forward. And a lot of that is going to be how we communicate with people. And so again, I'm not sure where that belongs, but I do have it in the communications bucket. But the two big ones, so I wanted to put a pin in that. I think our, I agree, the website, it's done, we have to do it. We need a citizens intake form. You know, we built one for our government website, we can build one for, and I think it's already underway for this one. And, you know, we need to have, do that website, a whole bunch of different things, like our select board materials publicly available for all. We need to have, you know, better searching usability, functionality for citizens to access town services, whether it's facility stickers, permanent applications, all, there's technology that exists for all of this. And there's no reason we can't do it. So that's, that's one issue, including with inbound. I think on outbound, I think what I would say there is we need to prioritize our priorities. If zoning is our priority, we need to have a communication strategy for how we're going to do outbound communications, including inviting citizen input, a survey on, you know, X, Y, Z, a survey on, here's all the capital projects we have lined up. You know, tell us what you, like, here's the back and forth, here's where we are, here's the decision points, you know, really start to hone our very limited town resources, I thought you adjusted, in on a few of the things that we as the board, where, you know, we set the priority for the town, so we should put the resources where those priorities are. And really have a robust strategy around that.
Paul?
I'm gonna probably piggyback on the Jean a little bit on the communication, is I think the webpage is getting to town, I think we'd all agree, our webpage is rather antiquated. It's not easy to navigate. And I've heard that from a number of people, just people going to town, just a lot of people, you know, family members if I said something, but that webpage should be interactive, easy to use. And someone brought this up some time ago, I understand it used to be in the paper, select board corner. You could add that into it, you know, with like.
If there were a paper.
If there was a paper, unless it's too bad.
That is a problem.
But it could be part of that webpage. And so most people can access a webpage nowadays. And they can look, they can offer input. If say, Tim over there wanted to speak to Jack, Jean, Paul, Diane or Cory, you can directly access that. And, you know, a response time should be expected and you should receive it. So I think really getting the ball rolling to get it out there would be the webpage. And that should be maybe a real priority, just to get, let people know that their select board means business.
Thank you. Cory?
Sorry, I'm trying to remember what the, what the question was, but I think I, just the specific things, I mean.
You'll figure it out.
Yeah, the, well, so one is, is, you know, we use this in my business and technology and any support structure whatsoever, is some sort of, you know, the blunt word is a ticketing system, an issue tracking system.
In and out.
This is inbound, this is inbound, customer, customer. Customers, these are our customers, frankly. They pay taxes, they're customers. And we can have that customer service mindset when we approach these things. And there's a lot, if you think of a customer service, there's a lot more creative solutions to these things. So an issue tracking thing, that way we can see, you know, and, and that way we're not duplicating work either. Someone has an issue and it's been answered, that should be in the system and we should know that and that should be easy to repeat. And then we can, Justin, the data can guide us to say, hey, there's a lot of questions coming up about this issue. Wouldn't it be cool if we said something outbound about it? So integration of the inbound and the outbound, especially with issue tracking, but also really leveraging the ability of citizens to easily either do input or sign up for things. We've talked about email lists, right? Are, do you want to hear about rec? Do you want to hear about what is it that interests you? And you should be able to sign up because I am a little bit worried about, we can spend all this time and effort communicating, before just sending out stuff every five minutes, we're gonna lose attention. So let the citizens decide what it is they want to pay attention to and get them that information really targeted. That's gonna go a long way because people are gonna feel like they're being talked to and the messaging is gonna respond, they're gonna respond to the messaging. So issue tracking and getting really smart about where we're targeting the messaging outbound.
Would it be fair to say that you might also say that leveraging your basic customer relationship software and programs, which is what they do?
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, there's a million options.
I just.
Yeah, we've got this kind of, you know, as you know, the government, the private government divide is, is a big gap. So I'm not quite sure and I'm gonna, you know, we should lean on town staff to say what we can do, but.
Okay. Diane, you've had all this time.
All this time, thanks. So I get to say, I agree with my colleagues. I, I want to tell a funny webpage story because I have learned how to navigate and find everything on that webpage because I've been at this a long time.
We can redirect the phone number to yourself on that.
Well, until yesterday, I can't even remember what I was looking for. I could not for the life of me find anything on the webpage. So I am all in on, on making it as user friendly as, as possible. And I think one of the things, Cory, that you mentioned that we've all been talking around is, is, is really trying to maybe establish like a CRM, like customer relationship management software program where people can sign up. So, you know, Chris started a few years ago, the five things, and I think Justin's doing that now. And those are, those are great, but those are, those are actually like what the select board corner was always in, when there was one, which is kind of a summary of the decisions and the what's going on and what's coming up kind of thing. And, and I think, I think if we thought about all the residents as our constituents, as our customers, and gave them an opportunity to opt in on certain issues, it would help with the outbound. Because I'm thinking about like master plan, and even when we were doing the Harbor plan, we sent out postcards to every house in the town. Please come, please weigh in, your input is important. And with the master plan, there were hundreds and hundreds of people that came out. And we, we got to that point where we had established some pretty significant priorities and felt that the community had bought into it because we heard a lot about it. We were very proactive about putting the information out there. And that's why I'm like so passionate about not losing steam on those things because there was input. And, you know, the, we all change every year, but that doesn't mean that those priorities aren't important to the community. So we have to find a better way of making sure those people are kept in the loop, updated on what's going on with, remember when you went to that meeting last week? Well, here we are now and, and kind of doing the target outbound communications with people to, to meet their interests. A lot of people say, you know, well, my street hasn't been paved. Do they know they live on a private way and that the town's not gonna pave their streets? You know, they may have if we had communicated properly two years ago when we passed a private way policy and went through the whole public process of what that all meant and how you would get your street teed up on the list or, or what a tip list is and why we haven't taken care of the Beechwood 3A, you know, intersection. So being able to try to push that out to targeted groups of people that have interest in certain areas, I think, and, and of course, it's always available for everybody, but I think, I think we should think about how we can do that. Because I really believe so many of these things and, and issues at town meeting and questions that come up at the last minute, people engage at the last minute, it's absolutely the truth, that we do a better job advancing everything, I think we'll feel more comfortable going into town meeting when decisions are getting made and saying, we've been talking about this for two years.
Do you mind if I just jump in one thing that I realized? We're at a really good moment for this because when you sign on to Zoom meetings, you put in your email address. We have this data. So we can follow people up and we can say, hey, thank you Koha, Town of Koha, thank you for coming to this. If you'd like to learn more about, you signed on to planning, you signed on to this, whatever, we already have this stuff.
Or serve on a committee.
Yeah, well, we can, we can start doing the CRM data collection tomorrow. I mean, we actually could do this.
We do have to be sneaky about letting them know we're putting them on a committee when they apply.
Well, Cory, to your point, you know, you could see if you had enough accurate and structured data, you could do some really cool improvements, like for example, if there's an issue at Cedar Acres Lane, you could email.
Water, sewer, exactly right.
The residents all from that saying, hey, FYI, or if the water's, you know, being flushed yet. The question is whether we have enough of that.
We don't, and I think we should start collecting it. I think that's an active thing.
Maybe that's the first thing.
Well, that's inbound, and that's really getting, you know, people to sign up and give you that data.
We could, here's a specific task, we could put in like their tax bill or their water bill or something, a form. Here's, you know.
Fact suspected.
Here are your, here are your five select board members, you know, they want to hear from you, we want to get you on a list, what interests, what are the issues that you're most, or the topics, not issues, you're most interested in, would like to put you, you know.
Sign up for town alerts.
Sign up for town alerts.
One of the big issues that we saw on the zoning bylaws, we've been through all this process, you've seen it in Harbor, you've been through all the process, two years later you're starting to implement it and people say, I have no idea what's going on. Is there a mechanism where we could use that data to remind people?
Absolutely.
You've been there.
Yeah, we can do that.
This would be something that would be, I think would be helpful because it's a recurring, well, people forget, people didn't pay much attention in the beginning, or they hear that what the actual impact is going to be and they say, well, I didn't realize it would mean this to my street or my neighborhood or that neighborhood. And then suddenly we hear the human cry, we didn't know about it. So, you know, is that a consensus that dealing with this, with kind of, people don't remember and now they say they never heard about it? Is this, you know, just yes or no around, do we think that that's an issue we should be aware of?
Maybe just make it an even higher level, just, you know, being smarter about who we reach out to, how we reach out to them, how we keep them updated, just being, smarter is not the right word, but being strategic about it.
But, but you, but you agree that?
Absolutely, yeah, 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 just was gonna bring up another level, yeah.
You know, Paul and Jean, you?
I agree with it. I hear a lot, and this town is pretty simple, I mean, we'll all agree, we're a beautiful coastal community. So the things that I hear a lot are our natural resources, including the harbor. I hear our infrastructure and I hear zoning, that we're being overbuilt.
Yep.
And thank God for that exposed ledge, that was one of my last acts on the planning board, I'm not gonna do that one, saved a couple, but I think a lot fell through the cracks on that because at that, at that last town meeting, which was kind of sad, we missed a good opportunity there, but.
On the zoning bylaw?
On the zoning bylaws, they worked their tail, they worked their tail off.
Town meeting before that.
And they worked their tails off and.
For good reasons, Tim, for all good reasons.
And the deck was stacked against them because the information got out. I think it's our job and be inherent on us to get that communication out about the goods. What is the benefit of the single lot exemption? What are the benefits of the exposed ledge? What are the benefits? Some may be against it. Does that mean we want to take your house and tear it down? No. What does it mean about cleaning up the harbor? What does it mean about bringing back the fish? You know, it's just, if people see the goods, you know, they can always have an adverse opinion, but again, that meeting was kind of a template, something really not to do because people that, you had a key group that were against certain items on that and they did, they stacked the deck and we didn't have the participation. Like you just said, Diane, you had people show up at some of the meetings, I've seen on planning board, when there's an item on the agenda that they care about, they turn it out in force. And if people realized what people are trying to do and we communicated that clearly, then, you know, your harbor projects and the things like that are gonna come to fruition, you know, in, in the time that they can.
The real challenge is it's always easier to vote no.
I was thinking the same thing.
And to, to use the, or, you know, I think what happened at special town meeting, it's still, how about that?
They all knew exactly, they, we don't understand this.
Right.
They were there because they understood.
We don't understand this, or, oh, we never do these things at special town meeting, wrong. Like, and, but, but there are those, those people, and we know one that goes to Elm Street. And, you know, the naysayers are very good at, you know, creating analysis paralysis. And, and so, and they are able to articulate, like, they, their job is to, you know, advocate for that kind of negative position. And nobody, because we all think, oh, we're elected and appointed officials, we're sitting around looking critically over months and months and months and we're getting input. And then we think we've got the perfectly baked cake, but we haven't done our sales job and we, we underestimate what the naysayers bring to everything, happened with town hall debt exclusion funding. You know, everything was teed up, it was right, we had all the arguments about why this building was needed, why it was gonna be a low impact, we, there was actually a public action committee formed, funded mailings, but, you know, there were people that wanted it not to happen more so than wanted it, or at least.
So this suggests that, that having, kind of looking for the consensus, having an ongoing update functionality in our communications is important.
And the communication has to go down a level because what we're talking about here was all, it wasn't select board, it was kind of all building, it was zoning bylaw, so we want to be sure that the subcommittees have the resources to do this messaging. Because I think that's where things get a little tied up.
And I think those committees don't necessarily view it as their job either. I think they, they view it as the select board's job.
Or town staff's job, right, yeah, exactly.
Staff's job to do that. And that may be.
And they may not be able to do it, actually.
And yeah, that may be ultimately the answer because they might not have that, you know, I don't want to say capability, that's the wrong word for it, but that's not their technical expertise, right?
That is good, Tim getting the message out the way you do.
But it's not, it's just not.
It shouldn't be, right.
And they don't have the, the access. And so I think for the bigger projects, particularly the, like the big ticket, big controversial ones, I do think it's important to get a wide range of people, not just those who self-identify as caring about zoning. Because you're gonna get, you, you, you need enough people hearing the positives and, and the correct message, so to speak.
You need like a 10 to one ratio for that. That's, I mean, I think that's where.
This is the American legal system and you're a part of it, it's, but to, to put someone in jail or to win a case, you have to win nine, 10 out of 10 or two thirds. The one third or.
The challenge is because so much of this work, the, the work that's in support of our goals is, are done by volunteer committee members. So while the staff manages a lot of the progress, like, these are volunteers and it's really hard to get people, you know, I, I'm thinking about some of the people that spoke up against the, the article at special town meeting, was it residential?
Single lot exemption.
Single lot exemption.
That was the big ticket.
Well, no, that got dropped and then we had the, the driveway.
The private way.
Deflections, correct, yeah, that's the one. So one, one didn't even make it.
Right.
And then one, one got, you know, hijacked.
Right, hij, literally hijacked. And, you know, I, I think about the people that came at the end and kind of did the whoo, and they probably wouldn't have wanted or, or been willing to participate in the process. That's kind of the problem. I think we just underestimated it and we weren't prepared with the outbound communication, with the having built consensus before town meeting. I mean, our warrants, we can do a way better job giving. And, and maybe it's not us, maybe, I mean, I warrant's an agenda and, and I don't know, I would love to know how other towns do it, but other towns have very active League of Women Voters or something that say, this is what it means if you vote yes for this.
They also have warrants that are like 50 pages long because they have all the.
Descriptions and pros and cons.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure if that's, that's a good or bad thing, but, you know, it's an option.
But, but again, we weren't prepared. But, but again, we weren't prepared with the-
No, not at all.
Okay, but, okay, so I think we can rehash what happened in there and we can learn, but part of the yeasty parts of politics is those things happen. I think our responsibility and governmental thing should be that the information is readily available, that's what I've heard from everybody, easily found, and that we have ways for in and out. And if we do that, I mean, if the people, they disagree, people get organized, I don't think we can necessarily do that. But what I'm hearing from everybody is that very robust communications inbound, and thank you Cory for pointing out it's inbound and outbound, or outbound and inbound, or whatever.
It's a, yeah, big circle.
So, we're in good shape, you know, with that, so we have the communications.
So, so let's think about this in terms of 12-month snapshot, what's, we can actually achieve. We all have consensus that we're talking about communications. But we need to bifurcate that discussion because we're talking about administrative communications, okay? Operational, how do we get a building permit, how do we do this? To the big policy, town initiative, capital project. That's two different kinds of information that we need to get a handle on in terms of who's responsible for what and will have to do it. To your point, there's customer relation management software, 311 Systems, they're typically called, which is a software program that does exactly what Cory said. It does the citizen intake form, it, it tracks it with a specific date. Each department, boom, 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 tracks it back to the citizen. There's a multitude of companies that do it. It's not cheap, but it, every department is responsible for it. There are companies that do websites so that you can go and do exactly what you're saying where you check off each issue that you're interested in. I want to know about planning board, I want to know about CBA, I want to know about conservation, I want to know about council on aging, and it automatically, you can put your email in for that. So, that stuff is doable. So, and again, so you're talking, I just want to make sure you're talking about what we can do in 12 months and that there's two different types of communication we're talking about. You're talking about minimizing citizen outreach through more communicate, effective communications, but you also want to increase and expand the systems for tracking and responding citizen inquiries and deadlines in a timely manner, right? So that captures-
All of the above.
All of the above, right?
Yeah, well done.
So, how that manifests itself, you know, that you can work out in the weeds with the staff, but the way, what you're talking about now, if staff were to do the data gathering and do the whatever, surveying's a great idea, but, you know, there are, in this technological world, lots of things to have you do that stuff so you can focus on responding to the data that you're receiving instead of being the egg gathering.
And that's, I think that's, and, and, you know, this is what I do professionally, it's just, you can do so much without so much human resources. You can be really smart with data and be really effective without having someone tabulating, you know, and really spending their time in Excel spreadsheet. We want to not do that. Like, we want to be, we want to be very, very, very lively.
I think we have a consensus, you know.
So communications, we agree, Mr. Chair is a goal for our point two. And, you know, the great thing is you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you can see what other communities do.
We track, in my office, we track highs and lows, customers, people coming in, different advertising methodology, what's more popular, what's going to make a hit, what grabs people.
Absolutely.
And very successful, you know, be it Google, be it different, what's getting the most hits. It might be a simple mailer sometimes, but we track that and we have the systems and the software for it. And, but I think, you know, and I agree with everything everyone said, I think the first thing is, is to get that webpage up. And then we can start, I mean, you're, you're in computers, right?
Yeah, I'm in web design and e-commerce marketing.
So, the, is to get that webpage up, is then, like some of your talents could start working this guy here, and Justin, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and blow the hell out of it, pardon my French, cameraman.
Bleep it out.
But anyway, you could probably pick to get it set up and assist with the intake and everything like that. I think it'd be fantastic, but I think first and foremost is to get that webpage up and running. Set a timeline, we get that done, the town sees it, like I say, Jesus, this board's, you know, means business. And nothing no one ever has, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that, it's just, um, but I think the webpage to kick and then start building on that.
But this is all a means, a very important, critical means, because nothing will happen if we don't have this communication structure. But it's a means to an end. The end is that we have boards and committees and studies and everything that have identified priority needs in town that we want to push over the finish line. That we know we need zoning reform, we want to push that over the finish line, we need to get to a place where we can.
Why don't we go, I was about to suggest that we move the zoning reform and let's get a sense of the priority of the board on zoning reform. And zoning reform means the, and I was on the bylaw committee and it can be, shall we say, tedious, but it's very important. Do we think that going forward again with that zoning, it, it should be a fairly high?
Can I just ask, before we move on to that, can we close the loophole communication?
Sure, go ahead.
So I have on my list, town staff update website, which has been ongoing for forever, but town staff inbound ticketing system.
Yeah.
Which might also include CRM.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And then I do think, and this is the part I really wanted confirmation on, I think this is us, the select board, working with our town staff on outbound communication campaigns, including surveys for the major priorities.
Yes, and I would add that it's not just the select board, because the planning board is, is doing this.
Yeah, and they're, and they're, but I don't think, I think the select board is the key partner, if not the leader, in, for example, making sure that we keep this moving to, to help them along.
My, my initial reaction was I didn't want us to be a, a pinch point. I don't want us to be the slow point, but what you're saying is really we're the ones that can drive.
We drive it.
Yeah, I understand that.
And I wonder how, because the schools do a really good job with this outbound kind of stuff. And I, you know, I wonder if there's a, a way to-
Well, you've got kids in classrooms, it's very easy buckets.
Exactly, it's a, it's a, it's a better segmented target audience, but, but nonetheless, I mean, there's obviously things we can learn, and, I mean, I'm sure all of you get asked questions about schools just as much as you get asked questions about roads, just as much as you get asked questions about whatever, you know? So, to the extent that we can partner all of that outbound, yes.
But I just want to be clear, your goal is to improve your communications, both outbound and inbound.
Communications part two.
And part of the strategy for that is a more robust website, a better customer relational management to track the nature of the complaints, compliments, whatever that you're getting.
And a better way for-
And a better way to message major town, major town projects, priorities, Jean, what?
Work, yeah, everything.
Priorities, priorities?
Priorities are priorities and any of the work.
Can I just ask, where's that with, just, you know, one of the challenges with that is, is just the open meeting law, basically. I mean, the, the tradition has been for the select board, you know, that the questions flow through either town staff, so the town manager and/or the chair of the board. So I think unless we, like, how do we do a newsletter from the select board? Is that something we would have to approve together in a public meeting? And, I mean, there's like some mechanics there that-
I think the vision could be, we could ask Justin to suggest an outbound messaging, an outbound campaign that includes us and how we can help, as well as the applicable working group and different channels for key priorities, not everything, it's got to be limited to key priorities. And we put it on the agenda, and we discuss, and everyone has their marching orders, and if we need to do something on social media, and I've seen the school committee do this on their hearings, we can pre-approve, this is going to be our message. So when everyone blasts, this is what you blast.
Right, exactly.
The approved, you know.
And this is why we're so grateful for this position and committed to it.
One of the things you want to, a template for that is, I mean, some of the things that I get involved in professionally, it's a positive requirement that all material facts have to be disclosed. And I think that's a good template because what you say is you cannot argue in favor of a position, but you can say what the facts are about that position. And that avoids open meeting law issues and that sense of template for our communications, that you're not saying Elm Street quarter is good for this and this, and this and that. You're saying Elm Street quarter will do A, B, C, D, and E and will result in this, this, and this, studiously, you know, neutral. And, and that really insulates the town from being accused of having, using public resources for partisan positions. So, but that's a basic part of, I think, what proper role of government communications. Social media, argue, have fun, different groups, argue, have fun. But for the town, I think we need to do that, but Jean, are you?
Yeah, I think we can work it out as we go. I think, you know, you can always have a majority or a percentage of you.
Well, but the zoning thing, that's, that's, the problem is I don't know how we phrase zoning reform by just the factsmen, right? That's a really hard thing, because basically, I mean, the, the driveway question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is, is it adatory or am I going the wrong way?
Nope, nope, you're good.
But that's, I mean, and I think we're going down rabbit hole here, but that's a really good example of, you know, it's, it was a definitional change, that's what it was. The facts were, we def, but then we had to describe the impact. And the impact is a method, is, is somewhat of an opinion, right? How is this going to, you have to, we have to predict what's going to happen, and some of that is visionary and that is a policy thing, and we want to say, I think, you know, we will go into, we, we have to be comfortable with the board taking a position which is going to advocate to protect the town. It's not just the driveway is going from 10 to 12, it's, we need to do this to protect people from these situations. So I just, I, I agree, but I also think we would have to choose our points to be-
I would bifurcate, I would bifurcate.
Yeah.
Because you can say, this is what happens, this is allow, this would allow X number of lots and this would do that. On the other hand, the select board can, in fact, take a policy position.
Correct.
Yes.
And I think the select board, at the time, has a responsibility to make it. But as far as the basic template of communications, we don't, because, I mean, we, we don't take a position, but-
Until we take a position in a public meeting.
Yeah, we can, but that's a separate thing from inbound outbound.
I have a suggestion on that, Robert. Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and, and also when we do our outbound information, you know, we, we take some time at a meeting and take a vote and identify the pluses and the minuses. Own, yeah, you get a vote on a Warren article, yeah.
Yeah, you have to do that.
Exactly.
But that's a, that's a deliberative-
Correct, and then it's out.
Opinion that we're, we're doing.
Well, Jack, you can factualize, sorry to interrupt, but you can factualize. No, this is the outcome of doing away with a single lot exemption, right? This is the facts, this is what is being proposed, board ought to, then later on would support it. Don't if it's an individual person answering, but the facts are this.
Exactly.
It's not, doesn't mean your house is going to be torn down, you know? This guy came up and said, I bought it because I was going to build a cottage and then give the house to my kids, but he didn't tell anybody that the house has to come down because it's sitting in the middle of a double lot. So, it's just not, you know, something like that, so you don't want to scare people. And they were able to, at town meeting, to scare the heck out of people to get up there. Like, I don't understand, I've done this and I'm, I'm, you know, 98 years old and I'm sitting there and I've been owning my house for 90 years because my dream was to give it to my great-great-grandchildren.
And now you're telling me it's wrong.
Who passed away before me, but I'm still going to give them anyway. So, you know, it's, it's a pretty simple procedure, you just got to, here's the deal, you tell the truth. These are what's going to, these are the outcomes, these are projected outcomes. We want to preserve Cohasset, we want to protect it, I think everybody in this town does. We are at a carrying capacity practically. We want to take care of this harbor, I mean, we've got a beautiful town, it's a gift, it's a temporary gift is what we have. And it's up to us to either keep it or really screw it up enormously, and we let people know that. I think people would fall on board, but I just think it's telling the truth, that's all. And that meeting was hard pressed because there's just people that, you know, put the fear tactics into others and, you know, they did it better than the people that proposed it, and I felt bad for the zoning people. But I just think telling the truth will get you a lot further down the road.
Clearly we have PTSD at this town meeting, December 2021.
We're out of trouble moving on.
I want to move past PTSD, otherwise you'll be-
It's the zoning, which is what we're, right, exactly.
So let's get something, lots of fun, but do we think that one of our priorities should be moving the zoning in some kind?
Do we think that the-
I think we're all on the same page, Jack.
We do, but I, my confidence was shaken, I mean, it really was, because I think we all sit here and agree to call everything used to said, but I worried that maybe the community doesn't. Because I think when, when push comes to shove, when people say, oh, well, if I can't do this on my lot, then I'm going to vote against it, and is that, is it just communication? Or is it that self-interest will always kind of pop up? So I'm, I'm, I'm worried that, I don't want to, I worry that we spend a lot of time and energy on something which will, I don't want to say just fail, it's not, I'm more worried deep than that. Cause a division, cause stress, cause other things to be distracted from because we're, and I'm not for or against it, I'm just, it's a worry that I have.
Well, that'd make it fair, you dovetail into what Diane said. If there's someone, if they're interested, they're going to come out to play.
Yeah, right.
All right? People always do. If there's a good game on, they're going to come and watch it.
Right.
So town meeting historically hasn't been the most densely populated, we all know that.
Yeah.
And so, but they populated that night, and if you notice, it was a pretty good exit after that boat got shot down.
That's true.
And I will, I will also add to that, a lot of that particular vote, a lot of people that I know that are 100% in favor of it fell for the, the spin, and, and, you know, and we weren't there to combat the-
We didn't have our cards, buddy.
We didn't, we didn't communicate enough and get the buy-in from the community. I do believe the community wants zoning reform. It's like the number one thing.
Well, what, so, I don't, I don't necessarily blame you Cory, and on the capital projects, I'm, I'm almost agnostic on everything. I just want us to actually do things, get it across the finish line. I, I think there's a variety of things we could do, it's the question of what will people vote for and what can we successfully move forward on. And so I do think it might be worth an inflection point where we have a lot of new residents, a lot of people have been moving in and out of Cohasset over the last 10 years. A lot, a lot's happened since that last study that was sent out. That was when I was living in Washington DC, you know, eight years ago at this point, or five years. And I think that it's worthwhile to go back and do that check, including-
Are you talking about zoning? Sorry, I lost you for a second.
I'm talking about zoning.
Okay, cool.
Talking about, you know, here are the things we're contemplating, what say you town?
Okay.
What say you citizens? And I would say the same thing on capital too. Like, here are the things that before we put huge money, time, and resources into, give me some feedback. Like, I want to know, do we care about, for example, accessory dwellings? Like, do people here want more flexibility on in-laws? Do they want smaller houses? If everyone's like, wait, no, I don't want a smaller house because I've been like planning a renovation for, you know, 15 years and we get an overwhelming, you know, vibe, well, those people answering the survey might not be the ones coming to town meeting, but it is an important-
In both directions on that one.
You know, it's an important pulse check on where the community might be feeling and where we can most productively focus our limited resources.
We can choose as a group, I'm sorry, you were next.
No, 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 go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if, if we choose as a group to say, we, this is important to the town, this is important, we can be active and we don't necessarily have to let the naysayers dictate us, you know, and so-
That's true.
But we can choose, we can just say, we're going to fight that fight, we're going to fight it well, we're going to fight it upfront, and we're, and what happens, happens, but we're not going to let speed bump stop us.
All right, let's clarify, is zoning important doesn't mean we're going to take a position one way or the other. I've reached out and some of the local builders and I've basically said, what would it take for you to, what is, what's the things that really bothers you? What we want to decide is, do we think it's time, it's been 35 years since we've rezoned, is it time to seriously figure out what it is that the community will accept? That's all what I'm trying to get to. If we think it's a priority, I'm not trying to say, do we want the single lot exemption? Or, or do we want the private way, whatever? Is it a sense that, that we need to address zoning one way or the other?
I've got one for that, if you don't mind. We could do exactly what they did at town back meeting, all right? Do a forecast of Cohasset. Do a forecast of Cohasset 20 years down the road, all right? Leave it alone, do a forecast, this is what we, who we see, all right? There'll be a house where you would have Burke Street stands, you know, if you can get away with it.
Get past Concom.
There you go, but, you know, to a degree. But they're getting bypassed half the time, too. I forgot, I didn't know, I didn't understand, so that staircase is up. And my wife's on it, so.
Yep.
But if you spell out the negatives, what's our, what's our forecast? What's going to happen to this town if we don't address zoning? And, you know, developers be damned, I'm sorry, it's not that I want to take bread out of someone's mouth, it's just.
And developers will find a way. I mean, that's the thing. The zoning, they'll work, they'll work within whatever we do.
They'll work within the parameters, but like, get up at town hall, we have people from out of town speaking up at the town meeting. And their only interest is because we have the loopholes that we have.
Yeah, so we've got.
And.
I, I just want to add that, you know, the, the master plan and zoning was one priority within the master plan was only, was adopted, I think it was two years ago on the planning board? And they just, the planning board just reaffirmed it in a, in a unanimous vote. It's not ancient history. A lot of the same people are still in town. I know people are, are new to town, but people are also frustrated with, with the development. And to your point, we're actually kind of at a max capacity. So without putting some guardrails up, we, we are looking at some serious.
Okay, so the question is not, let's not get down in the details of what it's going to look like, but I'm hearing from everybody that we think that addressing it is a priority.
Yes.
So we don't have to.
We need to put some more fuel on there.
But, all right, so we have the zoning.
So the goal is to.
Rationalize the zoning.
Reform.
Is to continue the, the comprehensive zoning bylaw rewrite, we don't want to lose momentum on that.
Yeah.
And, and bring additional resources to the zoning bylaw working group for the needed changes that we've tried and either have failed or haven't made it to town meeting. So finalize at least those two, right?
And put communication resources.
Yeah.
Just a point of information, point of information. We have Amy, I forgot her last name.
Yeah.
Right, who is working, not, not Amy from planning.
No, Amy from the town council.
Town council, she's working with Tom Callahan.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there is progress going on as we speak.
And Tom's eager to attack this, and I think we should, we should, you should harness that energy whenever it exists.
And it's free.
Yes, of course.
And it's free. Well, you got to listen to Tom, but I love him. You can tell him I said that, I'll tell him I said that.
You just did, you're on.
Oh, that's right, Tom.
You get something, we get something like this done, that's doable. You may get some more reaction, you may get some people get sparked up and get interested in serving on some boards because we don't have a lot of people banging down the door to serve on. Concom's going south, two people going down next month. You have, you know, it's opening up planning. And so they start seeing something, they may spark an interest, say, wait a minute, it does work.
And, and that's where perfection is the enemy of progress.
Exactly. Could say like maybe into Capitol projects.
Right, exactly.
But I think, I think to.
Jean, could you, when you're done on that, could you?
Solve the capital. Let's solve it, we'll go home.
Yeah, so I think on zoning though, because I'm just reflecting on how to really make this work and a part of this may be a pretty big deal, I will, so I want to bring it up. I think we need to get land counsel either through KP immediately because we're looking at attorney Cutler to hire. And if she can't do it, we need to put on another RFP to get someone immediately onboarded. I think a land legal specialist because I know, you know, she's the KP person. To help Tom, I, it's too heavy a lift for him to do, to rely on him alone. He needs support. And so I do think we need to make sure we can get that assistance.
Because he's, because he's an elected official on the planning board, he really needs to do it within his body.
He really, yeah, we, we need to, we need to harness this a little more within the town.
But we got crickets on that RFP, right, Michelle, on the, so I like, how do we?
That was a consultant, that wasn't a lawyer.
A little bit different on that.
That's different. That was more.
Well, because we want to bring the resources in for comprehensive.
It was too, it was such a broad mandate that nobody could.
No laws.
Get their, could get their arms around it.
It's a small town, figure it out.
And it's a small town. And they realized, you people, that's fine, give us the city of Boston.
So we think if we try again within parameters, we'll be more successful?
I think so, but if you're looking for legal counsel, that's different and you don't have to RFP legal counsel.
Yeah.
Okay.
A little more money, but.
We can, you know, for a land use specialist.
So Jean, you, you spoke to, you spoke about capital plan, it's.
I have one, I'm sorry about that on zoning.
Capital investment plans, but anyway, go ahead.
So one, just one more thing on zoning. In terms of the bylaw reform, and this will take some heft on the website, which is why I'm bringing it up, but one thing we can do, which is what every government agency does at the state and federal level, is what you do is you do what's called the notice and comment process.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
You put out the proposed bylaw, right? Just like we've been doing. And then you invite the community to proactively comment ahead of time. Tell me what you don't like, tell me where the issues are. If you're a developer, like, lay your cards on the table. And then you take it all in, you see, if there's legitimate changes we need to make, we can, we can address them, you know? It also gives you guidance on, you know, bylaws that.
So, so what do we need to do? Because, Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, the zoning bylaw working group did public forums, and it seems like that probably wasn't enough. So it's, what, what is the? What is the mechanism to get that to, hey, come in? Because if we're going to host public forums and no one's going to show up, we're kind of the same problem.
I think that segues, I think that segues into the webpage.
There you go.
To getting an interactive webpage that people can see. And they can, you know, the Jean, that's a great way of putting it because I think if they're educated and people that are against it are allowed to give input, like you just said, you might learn something, you might learn something, and you do pro and cons.
Here's the rub, and I think it's, it's what Katie Dugan was trying to tell us when she resigned her role with zoning, with the master plan with the nation committee, is that ultimately, town meeting is a legislative body and they're going to make that decision. So the naysayers are still going to swoop in at the end. And so it's all the more important for us to take those positions.
To lead our.
And to lead and to come up with our FAQs. These are the goods, these are the bads.
I know, but let's.
Communication is.
Let's move beyond PSAT on the, on the zone.
Well, well, no, Nia, Diane, Diane's right, but the, the notice and comment, like, you could put it out on Facebook, you know, different webpage, and then people who want zoning reform can just write letters in, you collect their information, and you invite them to town meeting to vote on these articles. And so it has, you know, a number of different purposes. And frankly, if you're going to get a lot of opposition, you want to know that ahead of time.
Yeah, I told, I'm 100% behind you, I'm just saying there's still that next step.
No, I know, I know, I know.
We have to do a better job, you know, taking positions on.
But it is a lift, so I think if we're going to do it, recognize that.
Yeah, but I think that that's, well, I think that's a good point. And I, I sense the idea of the, called the federal template of comment.
It's pretty easy to take form.
Pretty.
Yeah, we do it through the CRM process.
But.
CRM.
The, one of the ongoing items is capital, capital projects. And how do, is, do we want what's called a capital investment plan, CIP, in which we delineate all the potential of capital investments? And then see how they're going to be paid for? Do you want to follow it, Jean?
My, my, yes, we need this. And we need to be sure that that doesn't get in the way of getting stuff done. To Jean's point earlier, there's stuff we need to, we know, I mean, we talked about sidewalks, we talked about fields, we talked about town hall, we talked about harbor, I remember that Tim didn't have his chances, I mean, we, I mean, you know, a kid's going to get hit on a bike or we're going to, you know, the harbor's going to flood, something's going to happen. And we could spend, you know, two or three years trying to make this plan and X thousands of dollars on this plan. And I think we need to do that, but at the same time, we have pressing needs as well that need to happen. So I think, I think we need to be sure we're doing both. We're, we're, we're planning for what we need now, and we're also moving forward with how we, how we plan for the long-term future of the town. Both are important.
Yeah, there's that operational and then the capital.
I've spoken in capital budget about that. And, and there seems an appetite for them, it's a natural place for it to live. And they think about that.
Yeah.
Instead of worrying about how we're going to, you know, replace the police cars every five years.
It's built in.
I mean, we have anywhere from 70 to 170 million dollars potentially for the schools. We have a field study, we have town hall, which is probably, is it probably 17 million now? I talked to Phil there this afternoon.
Yeah.
Probably going to go up. So all these things, we may or may not be able to afford, but I think we need to know.
Thank you.
If some, well, anyway, that's just throwing out, do we, do we, what do we think about having some kind of capital investment long-term?
Meet it, yeah.
I, yeah, I mean, absolutely. And I think, I think it, to Corey's point, I think it's an and, like, there are projects that we need to push over the finish line. And I'm sorry, Tim left, too, because like, there's some harbor infrastructure things that we've been talking about forever.
Generations.
Town hall is a, I know it's not a sexy project, I mean, municipalities struggle with this all the time, but that building is unsafe. The elevator doesn't work, inaccessible, and there's been forced, you know, invested X number. So there are things, the, the, the field study. I mean, we've identified, you know, space and land that could address most of the, the needs for, for, for youth sports and high school sports. There is a possibility that we can act on some of these things that we know, that we've done the studies on, that we know have to happen for, and that are some things, some things that we, that are total needs and some things that are, are wants that we could actually push over the finish line sooner rather than later. And, you know, long-term capital planning still needs to take place. I mean, we have got out 10 years with school replacement roofs, but.
Police and fire.
Police and fire, et cetera, but we, we got to break something across the finish line as we, as we do that planning. And then when the schools come up, you know, we'll have all these relatively smaller projects that have, that have, have, you know, been at least completed or at least.
The argument, well, anyway, let's go around it. Jean, Paul?
I'm going to wait for a second because I missed a star, so.
Oh, it's just very simple, capital investment, long-term capital investment plan. And Diane is pointing out that there are some immediate things where we know need to be done, so maybe we should just do those. So that's basically the gist of a capital investment plan is where you look at your major projects over a long period of time.
Includes town hall, schools, and.
And fields and the fire station, everything.
Sidewalks.
And you decide, do you want it?
To be a scary list.
What's it going to cost? And then how do you pay for it? And you're going to have to have probably debt exclusion so you can raise money through bonds. And then as the bonds get paid off, you do a new project. That's what a capital investment plan. Capital budget, some of them are interested in at least considering adding it to their mandate, but that's where it is.
Well, I'm a believer in taking the whole apple, not just a bite at a time. I agree with Diane, you know, some of the things that, things that we can get done, you know? Solid, you know, it's safer town hall, schools is, I would think the best way of doing it is getting it over with, you know? Over time, it's not easier said than done, I agree with you.
Yeah, both ways.
But.
I brought up, while you were, I just brought up sidewalks, and we have got, you know, identified $5 billion, and I said, one kid's going to get hit on a bike, you know, if we, if we're going to wait two or three years.
I agree with that.
Why? Like, we know, let's do it.
He doesn't need a bike anymore.
Okay, that's, I've been through car accidents.
Your kid just came by, you haven't learned that.
Jack, you're being recorded.
Anyway.
But he's absolutely right, Jack, as, you know, that's, I said, you know, is in regard to say Elm Street. And I'm not against Elm Street, but taking context with every other street, when I drive by and see a kid standing on the street waiting for a bus, what's more important to me? A nice-looking street or a kid that's living? You know, that's the way I have to look at it, you know? When my daughter goes out, I used to catch the bus, same thing, they're standing on the bloody road. Streets covered in potholes, it's, it's, it's sad to say, we've allowed it or it's been allowed to happen over the years. And so we're at a tipping point. And you said that, I think, earlier, we are at a tipping point, but how do you make it more attractive and palatable? I do understand that, too.
Of course.
To, to the road point, I think one thing I would recommend, which is not part of the goals discussion, but we probably should have Brian Joyce, et cetera, come in and give us kind of an update on roads. Because I hear about roads, we all do, that's probably the, like, literally the number one random person complaint is their road.
It's on the agenda.
Thank you. Because, I mean, there are a lot, there's a lot of roads that we can't do, there are priorities, we probably would realize, I don't know what the number is, that we need, maybe we have $2 million a year to do road work, maybe less, and we need five. And whatever that is, that's a whole nother thing, that's an operational.
So that was my.
That's an override and.
I was going to touch that third rail.
But, but that's, we need to know that, what that looks like. And we need to understand what the road plan is and.
Well, so I think we could break it down into two components because it's only a year. And so I think.
That's a stretch. We're planning for 15 years.
And I'll be watching on TV.
And our facilitator has gone silent because we've gone completely off the deep end.
She's very good at ringing these things, yes.
I think the first six months, if we want to get it done, let's rip off the Band-Aid on the low-hanging fruit shovel-ready projects with hopefully broad community support, if they're shovel-ready at this point. You know, our, our debt exclusion deadline for getting stuff on the bell is early August. So we don't have a lot of time. I, you know, my, my, my list is sidewalks and roads. We already have a sidewalk plan from Katie Dugan, we need to look at that more carefully.
Absolutely.
We might need to do some outbound outreach before we figure out exactly where we want to land and talk to Brian.
But we need the funding.
And we need the funding.
We need the funding.
Fields and rec.
Absolutely.
We've got a field study now. Town hall to me is a question mark. I know we're getting closer, but do we feel like you're going to get a positive vote in terms of the outreach that's been being done at a debt exclusion?
See, town meeting, town meeting's passed a bunch of times. And I do like doing this at this, at this upcoming ballot because it's going to be the maximum input of residents showing up to vote. If we're going to ask for a lot of money, I think it's our legal fiduciary responsibility to get as many people possible voting.
My question is, do you think they'll vote for it?
I think so, yeah. I, I, I think, but again, for me, and again, with town hall, it's always been, I don't, I don't care about the building. It's about the numbers, right, the numbers are, you know, are, are, we've done this a bunch of times, every time we get the same outcome, which is, we're gonna spend eight to ten million dollars just keeping the thing upright, and it's not serving our needs, we can, you know, and we're gonna get a worse outcome, and if you project, if you do the thirty-year projection, we're gonna spend way more money keeping this building up than, than trying to, to leverage the, the work, so.
I, I was, I've attended most of those meetings, I know a thing or two about town hall building. There's, financially, there's no question that the building needs to be replaced, and trying to keep it going is more expensive. The thirty thousand dollar elevator that just went is a classic example. So I don't think there's any question, the question is whether this board wants to make that a priority, and do we wanna have that as a short-term goal, where.
Like a two-month.
Two-month goal, where we, we handle the town hall, fields, and what was the other one called?
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
And sidewalks.
Harbor.
Potentially harbor.
And harbor.
What, what in the harbor?
I think, we, I think we need money for engineering and grant, and grant writing, I mean, Tim has been, was here to talk about, we, you know, in order to get grants, we have to get things ready.
He wasn't here to talk about it, because he knew.
Oh, sorry, well, he said this in email.
He knew he wasn't gonna talk, but I told him he would be here to, to listen.
I think if you're doing a debt exclusion, we need a specific definable project.
Yes.
To tell people.
A single one?
In the harbor, what, is it the captain's wall, is it, like, what specifically?
Some of that's being covered through.
Oh, breakwater, I mean, breakwater is just alone.
Right.
Is enormously.
Really, it's a issue.
Breakwater and those issues are so far in the future, we're talking about low-hanging immediate. I mean, I've been on the harbor committee.
For sure, yeah, yeah.
What would be important to say, Tim Davis, what's gonna make him, what's gonna make him smile, what's gonna make him tell everybody? That's how you get word out, low-hanging fruit, but even if it's a small thing, what's gonna make him happy, say, hey, listen, they're working for me.
Yep.
That's all, again, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be dredging the harbor eighty feet and making it, you know, putting, you know, kind of striped bass in there, it's just, what would, what would, yeah, but what would make Tim Davis
There are a bunch of things that he mentioned.
I was just saying, the low-hanging fruit, I'm agreeing with that.
So we go to the low-hanging fruit, Parker Avenue ramp, that's already going on, putting a lift system for the lobster, and that's already, a lot of this is going on.
Yep.
So, when you get into the details, I don't think we have to worry, but we, we could have a catch-all, you know, immediate, you know, low, relatively low-budget harbor stuff, and put an omnibus, Phil, do we want to have an omnibus kind of wrap up all these low-hanging fruit and get it done with, is that what we want to do?
We're asking for one capital number to cover boom, 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 projects.
And can I throw?
Identify those priorities through the committees, like Tim's committee.
I'm gonna bring it up, because I think it has to be brought up, school safety, we need to harden our infrastructure.
Well, we will do that.
And we need probably another police officer at the school.
We will do that.
Well, we, we need to understand exactly what we need from our police and school committee.
That's a conversation we shouldn't drive, and we should listen, and, and literally, I'm, I think we're all ears on that, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and, but I think we have to mentally plan for something, because.
It's also something that in the past has, is covered under open meeting law, for executive session, I believe, we go to our executive session on security, so I think it's probably something that would be great to discuss.
I just wanna put it on your radar, because I did talk to Frank McCallum about it, they're doing executive session on issues, but I do think if we can immediately get this teed up for the fall.
Omnibus, shall we say, the omnibus.
Yeah.
So, can I touch the third rail?
Which is?
Go right ahead.
Which is a, 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 an override.
Are you, are you also standing?
Operational.
An operational override.
Do you think we're gonna need it?
The schools were eight hundred thousand dollars in the hole last year, and we patched that up, but they, I mean, you know, Craig and Pat made a very, very convincing and passionate speech about, you know, all the, of mental health services, teacher salaries, all the COVID things, all the things that they have that they think are mission critical, and, you know, I'm not gonna be, I, I told them in that meeting that you're, you don't have to sell me, I, I wanna give the schools whatever they need, you need to make the case outside of it, the other thing is capital planning, you just talked to, you said you talked to capital, are they, we haven't changed the amount of money they get in ten years, right?
Capital budget.
Capital budget, so, I mean, literally, their amount of money is going down, we need to reset them, or else we're gonna go backwards. So, I know it's a third rail, but I wonder if we need to sit down and do some math on that stuff.
Well, if you wanna do that, now, there's, well, the board can decide whatever, but I'll give you some practical. Now, you go for an override, and what you assure is gonna pass, there's a long and bloody political history in this town, and a lot of people who will be in favor of it, in fact, in the voting booth, won't vote for an override.
I understand.
The art is to do, using debt exclusion, to do what we need to do through our bonding, without triggering the opposition. So, in the short term, the argument for the omnibus, right, you should take some of these things that individually in the school, safety, safety will be part of that.
It won't be, I don't think the school safety will be part of the debt exclusion.
No, no.
Okay, sorry.
For the omnibus, whatever we call it, so we take these things like town hall, like field study, and we, and we just get it done with, we spend the money, and we get, because we have here, 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 and here, we have a sufficiently broad political constituency to get it on the ballot in November and get it in August, and get it passed.
You wanna keep it clean.
If we get to the override and all that.
Gets muddy.
You should just attainable.
That you almost need longer-term planning for, like, we need to get to that conversation where we need to tweak the operation, annual operation of budget.
I think we need a, and it might be a heavy lift, but I think we need to do, like, omnibus, November, but simultaneously be doing the long-term financial planning, both as to capital, because a, a, a new school or a school renovation, both are gonna be good.
Well, they're gonna blow any calculated, that's gonna blow that up.
Crazy expensive, we, we might have, not only for the schools, but for police with the new mandates, and, and we, in theory, won't need an override until next budget cycle anyway, because we're, in theory, good for this cycle.
Correct.
So it's not like it's a November thing, anyway.
Except the ballot, but that's what I keep going back to, if we're gonna, if I'm gonna, if we're going, if I'm gonna be comfortable asking the town for a lot of money, I don't want it to be three hundred people that show up, I want it to be as many peaceful as possible.
I think if you're talking about an override, more people, people are gonna.
People show up.
That's.
Totally right.
Don't worry.
Totally right, never mind.
We had to.
Absolutely right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but I, I think that it's critical, and we just don't have the time right now, I think we need to have probably a select board working group to help with capital budget, it, it can't, I don't think it can be just capital budget, because we have the schools involved.
There's gotta be schools.
We've got CPC, because they, well, they maybe, will take on some of that, maybe advisory, I think it should be select board-driven, because we put the override on there, and.
So we, we used to, select board had a, a budget planning group, two iterations, specifically to come up initially with the financial management policies that are ten years old, and do need to be looked at, and it was, you know, two members of the school committee, two members of the select board, two members of advisory, two members of capital, and, of course, only the women on the group actually got the work done, I was gonna say that, but, but yes, I think that's, we should look at that again.
I wa- I wish to live, I'm not gonna say a word.
Well, and that's where communications is really important, like, having our communication strategy going a little better, I think, in terms of inbound, outbound, on a lot of that stuff.
Absolutely, that, that helps those committees out more than anything, and they're the ones in the trenches.
I have had some discussions with some people who are very skilled in their own private thing, about a blue ribbon investment management, capital investment management plan, I think we should do that, but for the purposes of setting our short-term goals, if we were part of our things, is achievable things, I think the idea of an omnibus.
Debt exclusion, but.
Well, I don't know if we need a debt exclusion, or whatever we need to do, but these.
If you want to do that.
But is that something that we want to do, and if we do, we've got some work done between here and August to decide what it's going to be to get on the ballot, but we need, as a board, to decide whether this is one of our priorities. So if we could just focus.
Yes.
I, I, let's, let's, let's be engaged, let's be excited, let's be communicative, and let's have a deadline, we have a deadline.
Is that yes?
Yes.
Just say yes.
Yes.
You're right, though, deadlines.
Oh, I agree, nothing is done without a deadline, that's why we have, we have an August deadline.
That's when it hit you up, a deadline for a webpage.
So we're saying long-term infrastructure is the goal, like, infrastructure slash long-term financial planning. First goal within the next six months is to try to drive home this omnibus bill.
Yes.
Through the ballot, the debt explosion, figuring exactly what needs to be on it, getting that worked teed up.
Yep.
Simultaneously, and this may lag a little bit, because it's the other work, but simultaneously trying to do some form of a select board work, a group or commission to be doing that long-term.
Because it's, both are important, right, because we wanna be able to say, if we can get this done now, then it looks like this, if not, it looks like this, to what Paul said earlier, by.
Showing options.
By showing options, it makes the decision much easier to understand.
And I think a part of that planning too, is not just using overrides and debt exclusions, I think we should be looking at other forms of bringing revenue into co-hasset.
Yep.
Like, other towns, like, other towns are doing, if they start moving on that, then, you know, we might wanna consider it too.
I, I totally agree, and I think they have to be parallel, and with the, with the omnibus, ombudsman, or whatever it is.
Omni bus.
Still, debt exclusion, ombudsman, that's the relationship person, yeah, that's gonna be tough.
Yep.
He deserves it.
So is that a.
The financial planning, though, I just wanna.
Yeah.
Remind people that we don't have a finance director, and there is, you know, these are gonna need key staff.
We have a half of a finance director, because Dawn is, per Chris's email, gonna be working, so, I'm just saying, we have, we may have more resources now than we have in six months, is that, Michelle, do you think that's a?
I don't think so.
Okay, then I will, I will, I, I take that back.
Well, we, and we may just have to outsource some of this too, to be frank, I mean, Pingham gave us all their financial modeling, and a part of that's just inputs in in Excel spreadsheet, not, not to diminish the complexity of financial modeling, but.
We can diminish Excel.
And there's firms that do municipal consulting like this, if, but we definitely need to talk about that.
And whether or not we have a debt exclusion pass will affect the, obviously, the financial plan, because you look at the debt burden for households.
Correct.
Which will change based on whether they vote for the debt exclusion, from a tax standpoint, right?
No, we need to map that out, we absolutely need to map that out, yes.
So, this is, okay.
Well, you guys can do that, all right, thanks, all right, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, you know, one of the things, it's, it's eight o'clock, and one of my goals is to make sure that we're not sitting there till eleven thirty.
Thank you, Jack, you're the best, I. I, I do wanna just put something for us to start thinking about, and, um, is the staff, and how overwhelmed they are, and we have to be super mindful of that as we carry all these discussions forward, especially with hybrid meeting management, depending on how that all plays out, and I know there, the Mass Select Board Association's doing a workshop, I think, Michelle's gonna be speaking at, just from a staff perspective of, you know, it's a lot, it's easier for somebody like Lauren Lind to manage meetings from home, clearly, because she manages seven or eight committees.
Which is also unreasonable.
It's completely unreasonable, and even a new finance director, if they're a seasoned municipal finance director, that'd be great, but they may not be, and it, there, you know, there's gonna be a lot of push and pull, and I think we all just have to be very mindful of the impact on the staff, and the staff has to be with, as, as awesome as we all are, and smart and experienced.
Not our job.
It's not our role, and we can't just be out doing financial plans for the town, so.
That's, yeah, well said.
Well, and this is something that I put down somewhere, where I think too, we probably are gonna need to consider condensing some of the working groups, we've got a lot floating around with the master plan now, and that creates a lot of workload on our staff, too.
Yep.
And I think if we can maybe make it a little more succinct, particularly if we're gonna be creating new groups, or one group, I think.
Combine them, yeah?
Yeah, maybe, we, we better combine.
I think it's a very good idea.
And, and, and maybe try to focus a little, I mean, there are groups, right, there are the select boards groups, I think we need to look at the charges and try to, again, focus, so that way you don't have staff being pulled in all different directions for, like, ideas that people are bringing up that are not necessarily the focus or priorities of what we're trying to get done.
And guess what, bringing some of these projects over the finish line, that's away with the study group.
It's gonna unload some of that work, actually, or bring resources.
So we can consolidate some, because.
There goes only if we get that done, then they get to retire.
Yeah, no, those will never, those hearing boards are stuck forever, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should think about that for the next meeting.
When we start focusing on execution of projects, it's a very different lift than the study groups.
Absolutely.
Even with town hall, for example, that will change.
Well, we, we're at the point with these study groups, it's either, you know, fish or cut bait, they've been around, we get it, we get it done.
Yeah.
And, and so we're, we're gonna identify the ombuds, Phil.
Omnibus.
Omnibus.
Sorry, Jack, it was my fault.
You're just thinking of, you know, fish fry or something like that.
Fish fry.
But that's the purpose of doing that, taking these things, and a lot of stuff maybe get a little left by the wayside, but we're gonna take the priority things that the town really wants, and, and our guidance will be to put together a constituency of diverse groups, so we have the critical mass to get it passed. And if we diverge from that, and we have this and that, and throw this in, or, oh, what about my pet project here, or somebody's it, it'll all fall apart, so we, that's the one thing we've learned, focus.
Be tight.
Be tight.
Be tight.
Right, we look at the prioritized things that we really need to get done as a town, not the wish list.
Yeah.
Long-term, we have the blue ribbon, however that's constituted, but short-term.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to focus on that, and that's all we're all gonna be doing between now and, you know, August.
Yeah, absolutely, great.
All right, so, summer vacations.
Nope.
Gone.
Full speed ahead.
I think I'm resigning.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Get all that?
You have three goals, pretty much really broad brush from ten thousand feet helicopter, communications, zoning reform, and capital.
Yeah.
FY twenty-two goals were communications, zoning reform, and capital, so I want you to think about what you're gonna do different in the next twelve months, that you did in the last twelve months, to have a different discussion twelve months from now.
I think in the last, sorry, in the last twelve months, we learned what we didn't know.
Right.
We, we, and that is huge, and now I feel like we all now, this is stuff we never, didn't know twelve months ago, at all, now we do, and I, I think that's a good sign.
Good.
So it's different, it's the same, but I feel, I feel strategically, it's very different.
I think that's an excellent point, and I wanna add to Jack's point of adding a little more specificity to what you're gonna undertake in the next twelve months, so it's a little more chunky now, so you can have that achieved.
Yeah.
Okay, because we were maybe a little broad brush, but you have some work to do, because you need to actually wordsmith these goals right now. I will caution you, though, that if you want to concentrate on the priority of this August omnibus budget, low-hanging fruit, debt exclusion, whatever, that getting any real traction in anything on outbound communications, customer inquiries, or whatever, will probably be secondary, because the communication campaign, in terms of setting that up for you, will probably be a priority, so sort of have to have, now, you have priorities, now you have to have relative priorities in terms of prioritizing your priorities, so just keep that in mind in terms of the bandwidth, and Justin's only been here since April.
Well, it, it gives Justin a, a structure, right, I mean, this is, you know, you have, what you will set up for this push will, will, will be the template that you can then build upon, you know, so I, I see those two solving each other.
I think communications is kind of the foundation of all of this, it's the only way we're gonna bring these to closure.
But that is something, we don't have to get involved in the day-to-day, we've already set the goal, we have a staff member, and that's why you have a staff member to implement, you know, our goals.
That's right.
So, the question is, on, are there other specific things that you think we need to address? I think this omnibus is going to be a big deal, we're not gonna have time to be much beyond that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, in the interest of time, what I need you now is to do your statement in terms of your goal, you were good at this, as I recall, last year, Jack, in terms of, I was actually able to do one for the communications one, when we got in the budget, in terms of maximizing citizen outreach through more effective communications, and expanding and increasing systems for tracking and responding to citizen inquiries, and deadlines in a timely manner.
So, the only word that I would change is the third, which is maximize citizen, I would say, engagement.
Instead of outreach?
Because, because it's not all about outreach.
That's fine.
Citizen engagement by all of the above, the inbound, outbound.
Through more effective communications.
Citizen or resident?
Good point, thank you, resident.
Resident.
Or community.
Yes.
Is the word, is the website on there?
Maximize.
Actually.
Resident is everybody that lives here.
Right, residents. There's a phrase folks are using now. I think resident works.
Resident. Yeah, I think resident.
Like a synonym to resident?
That's fine, we can.
Townie? Get all those townies involved.
All right, so now.
So what's our, what's next?
The next one is zoning reform, which has the components of the continue, the rewrite, and bring additional resources to the committee for additional changes, including, and then a sub of that, just for consideration, that doesn't necessarily need to be, the goal is bringing in the services of a landowner's attorney.
That's fine.
That was just.
Yeah.
That's it, done.
It's something, right, we added up that, what is it?
Continue, I was gonna say, continuing the work of FY twenty-twenty-two on comprehensive zoning reform and zoning bylaw reform, including bringing.
Legal, technical, and communication resources.
Yeah, bringing on new resources and presenting.
And providing additional resources to the working group.
To the working group.
Including technical support.
Legal, not.
Legal and technical.
And we could simply say providing additional resources, or additional legal, blah, 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 I don't think we need to say to the working group, because we just talked about maybe consolidating, it doesn't matter.
Additional, Tracy, additional legal and technical.
Okay, Tracy.
Got it, Tracy?
I've got pieces of it, I'm hoping me and you together.
You can recreate this.
Do we wanna be explicit about saying we want a bylaw for town meeting? Bylaws, or is that too specific?
You had that last year.
Yeah, let's, forget that.
To you.
Deadline.
Next, spring.
Yeah, annual, please.
For annual.
We don't want that excuse, oh, we don't do this at special.
For the annual.
Including preparation of.
Twenty-three.
Town meeting, yeah, A T M.
New school work. New school, on new bylaw. So continuation of FY twenty-two.
Then we're going to. The school buses in this way, the omnibus.
Did you yell?
Comprehensive reform zoning bylaw and providing.
For proposed bylaws.
Proposed bylaws and providing additional legal and, um, and technical resources for the twenty-twenty-three ATM.
Great.
Yep.
Tracy, good. Okay. Third and final, which is.
Easy one.
The omnibus.
Omnibus.
Prepare.
We will, um.
Push over the finish line all the low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Has a certain, a certain fruity.
Prepare a priority list of capital projects to be considered for a possible, um, debt exclusion.
I don't think we have to say debt exclusion.
I don't want to say that either, but it's kind of what we're doing, so I'm kind of on the fence about that.
Well, we can, we can say, you know, um.
Well, you already have several projects that are already signed, sealed, and delivered.
Pre-seen, shopping ready.
So you don't, so present.
Secure funding.
There we go.
For shovel-ready projects.
Present and secure, right.
Develop a strategy to secure funding or deploy a strategy to secure funding.
What we really want to do is we want to get approval of the omnibus.
We want to get the omnibus ready. Yeah.
The omnibus infra, infrastructure plan.
Absolutely.
For shovel-ready infrastructure projects.
Yes.
And you want to present that to town meeting?
Yes.
Special town meeting and have it ready for the fall ballot.
That's, that's infrastructure is.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Dan.
That, that presumes that we would have special town meeting in advance of November.
Don't need to do that apparently. I think we can.
You can put on the ballot before town meeting.
I think we can ballot and then town meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's going to be either or.
It needs to be both, but it can be the order.
Because I looked at the list of dates.
It can be either or.
Really? Special election, at fall election.
It's so many days before the, the election has to be voted.
Wait, do we need to have a vote at town meeting subsequent to that?
Yes.
Yes. Ends in authorization, ones in appropriation, but it doesn't matter.
So we can, we can ballot it and then social town meeting it.
Yeah, and, and just as a, as a side, you know.
Be a terrible way for that.
I got.
Easy to hack.
Another cookie wordsmith thing, but I, I'm a little uncomfortable with shovel-ready because that actually means something.
No, I would say infrastructure, an omnibus infrastructure plan.
Right. And we're not going to throw anything on there that can't just happen, but.
No, an achievable, immediately, a reasonably achievable, um, omnibus infrastructure plan for.
Because there could be a harbor resiliency project or something, or the, or a.
We just want to allow.
We have to identify these things.
Correct. That may not be a shovel.
I know. We don't want any shovel. We just want to be.
Ready projects?
An omnibus infrastructure plan for reasonably achievable infrastructure programs. I have infrastructure in there twice.
Projects?
Projects.
Pretty much.
Projects instead of programs?
Projects.
Your project.
Okay, that sounds good. We technically vote on this at another meeting, so there could be further.
Yeah, there could be further. I would just caution that everybody in the world is going to come out with a, a, a project for this, and the board is going to have to show some discipline. I think we know what we were talking about this evening, and we need to stick to our guns because otherwise it'll be a free-for-all of the feeding trough.
If there hasn't been a plan, then.
Right, if we don't already know.
You haven't done a ten-year study. Forget about it.
No, if we don't, if it's.
You haven't done a fifty, four studies over fifteen years.
Well, we're just going to have, we're just going to unplug our phones and.
We have those. We have those.
So.
Those are the things that'll make the most impact.
Absolutely.
Sidewalks. Yeah, we can get five million for sidewalks.
Except for town hall, right?
Do we want to have the longer, the blue ribbon commission for longer financial planning?
Or just the longer-term financial planning?
Just longer-term financial.
Yeah, longer-term financial.
That can be part of the stand-goal gene and establish or appoint, which is your word.
Establish.
Establish.
A process.
Liaise with capital budget to establish a process.
Everybody said everything they want to say?
Yes.
Aye?
The longer-term.
And you've read that. Does everybody agree with what's been presented and?
You have some.
Jack's looking for a motion, by the way. Let me know.
I used to be able to, to say, you know, motion to adjourn, but, but now I have to have, I can't do it anymore.
You're at the mercy of the rest of us.
The mercy of our dear, I don't know.
We have cookies left.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Grady steps to the plate. We have a motion to adjourn made by, by Paul Grady. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. All those in favor, I guess we have to do roll call.
No, we're in person.
We're in person.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.